Yeah, Vern will be here.
It's like an on-deck circle, you just get to pick whichever one you want, you know? Yeah, so it's all the audiovisual stuff supposed to work a lot better now, I guess, and like now, instead of doing the projector on the side there, you can just...
I'd like to call to order the Harsburg Planning Commission at approximately 6:31. Commissioners, you received your August 2nd, 2023, need amendments. Are there any corrections, additions, changes? Is there a second?
Jeff, how should we handle both Joe and I not being present at last month's meeting?
You guys just wouldn't vote on that.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Were approval of the amendments as they are? All those in favor, state by saying aye. Opposed? Spent abstentions? Motion carried. Under old business, there is none. Under new business, this is a special exception application for 205 State Street. Its zone RF is filed by Davis Steins with the J E M group, which is to convert the existing office building into a three-unit multi-family dwelling.
Is Mr. Stezen here? Okay, you want to come up here? So, the applicant is proposing to convert the existing office building into a three-unit multifamily dwelling. Per Section 7-305.7 of the zoning code, ZHB approval, a special exception application is required to establish the proposed use in the Riverfront District. Property at 205 State Street is a .02 acre lot featuring a three-story, 2,433 square foot structure, which was constructed circa 1900. Properties bounded by State Street to the north, the property at 207 State Street to the east, the property at 409 North Second Street to the south, and the property at 203 State Street to the west. This attached structure features elements of the Second Empire and Italianate architectural styles. Character-defining features include the brick facade, the masonry water table, and entrance stoop, the decorative metal fence enclosing a portion of the sidewalk in front of the building, the prominent entryway, the box awnings above the windows and entryway, and the substantial wooden cornice featuring brackets and a box awning projecting from the mansored roof clad in real slate shingles. Main entryway features wooden-paneled double doors set in a wooden-paneled frame with substantial pilasters featuring brackets, topped with a simple transom featuring the property address and an awning featuring real estate shingles. It is accessed by brownstone steps. Fenestration also includes six one-over-one wooden windows fronted with storm windows. The frames feature decorative brackets and are topped with awnings featuring real slate shingles. The structure appears to be topped with a flat rubber roof. As an attached structure within a prominent downtown streetscape, the building is similar materials, design amassing to nearby structures, while featuring unique additions that create a differentiation which also characterizes the block. Thus, the property makes a substantial contribution to the historic and architectural character of State Street. The Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions: Any proposed exterior work will be discussed with the city's historic preservation specialists, who will determine whether such work can be administratively approved or whether approval from Harb will be required. The applicant will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to confirm the appropriate size and location of refuse collection on-site and update the building accounts to reflect the new use. Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons: Proposed project will adaptively reuse a former office building, ensuring the maintenance and occupancy of a historically and architecturally significant property and re-establishing residential uses on-site. Proposed reuse will add new residents to the neighborhood to activate the street on nights and weekends and grow a customer base to support local businesses and will provide additional units to the downtown housing inventory. Other conversions of former office buildings in the surrounding neighborhood have demonstrated that the proposed use will not adversely impact the character of the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you, Steph. Could you state your name, address, and your relationship to the project?
Yeah, my name is Dave Stezen. I'm with Gem Group. Our address is 214 Senate Avenue in Camp Hill, PA. We represent George Fernandez, who is the owner of the building.
Okay. You heard the staff report with the conditions. Are you acceptable of those conditions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you want to add anything to the report?
No, other than there will be no exterior work to the building, so Harb, I've already made that clear to Jeffrey Knight, and he said then we wouldn't need to do any Harb approval at all.
Okay. With that, commissioners, I have no questions at this time, but I'll come to you if you have any comments or questions on it. Commissioner O'Toole?
Yeah, Dave, you know, how long is the current owner? How long has he owned the building?
I have, I don't really know. Hasn't been that long. It was a business previously to his ownership, but it can't be more than a year.
Okay, was it his business that was in there?
No, it was another business. I'm not exactly sure what the other business was.
Yeah, I mean, we're seeing more and more of these. In fact, this is probably about the third one we've had on State Street, and it's a movement I think I'm in favor of, and three units is not too dense, so I'll be in favor of it.
Okay. Commissioner Merrick?
I agree with Commissioner O'Toole's comments about the conversion. I think my only question would be in regards to parking. Is there any existing parking on-site that premises?
No, and in fact, there are three individuals within our office in Camp Hill who live within the city, and they go to the City Parking Commission and get a voucher to park where they need. There are areas throughout the city that they're allowed to park in, and also there's a parking garage right behind this structure, and I understand that they may be able to purchase a monthly voucher from them as well.
Thank you.
Any other concerns?
No, I said thank you.
Commissioner Jordan?
No questions.
Commissioner, and you have to pronounce your last name.
Yeah, Canamucio, but I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. With that, I'll go to the public and I'll come back to you, commissioners. Is there anyone for or against this project? If you are, state your name and address. I'll start to my left. No one center. There's no one on the end. Commissioners, if you have any other questions or comments, let us know. If not, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve its conditions.
Is there a second? It's been moved to second. Were approval of the project with the conditions? All those in favor, state by saying aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you.
Before I go on to the next item, I've meant to do this before, the old business. We have a new commissioner on board, and if I could let him introduce himself and just give me a brief background.
Sure, thank you very much. Yeah, my name is Joe Canamucio. I live in midtown Harrisburg on Capitol Street, and this is, yeah, this is my first commission meeting. I've lived in the city for a little over 10 years now, and, yeah, I work, I work in town as well for the Pennsylvania State Education Association, but it's a pleasure to be here and to work with all of you.
Thanks for having you, and I'll give you sort of my usual speech. We're new commissioners. We are basically a real working commission. We take our job seriously. Many of the commissioners have been with me for a few years, and we take it seriously. We, if we don't know a location or where one of these projects are, we go out and research and look at that place and see what it's all about, and, of course, we reviewed all the information that Jeff gives us. So, you know, it's not just a rubber stamp board here. We take it very seriously, but it's good to have you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item number two. This is a special exception application for 104 and 106 Walnut Street. Its zone RF is filed by Bradley Jones. He's with Harris Town Enterprises, Inc., and he's, is to convert each of the existing office buildings into a two-unit multifamily dwelling. Steph?
Yes, so the applicant is proposing to convert the existing office buildings into separate two-unit multifamily dwellings per Section 7-305.7 of the zoning code. Proposed use requires zoning hearing board approval of a special exception application. The properties at 104 and 106 Walnut Street total .09 acres and feature two-and-one-half story structures with a total area of 4,454 square feet, which were constructed in 1930. Properties are bounded by the property at 108 Walnut Street to the north, Walnut Street to the south, and the property at 101 North Front Street to the west. This, for 104 Walnut Street, the semi-detached brick structure features elements of the federal architectural style. Character-defining features include the varied facade treatments, including brick on the front and painted brick and vinyl siding on the rear and side elevations, the decorative metal grates over the basement windows, the storefront window design, the arched dormer with arched windows, and the dual-brick chimneys. The main entryway features a solid wooden door set within a simple wooden frame and topped with a divided light transom. It is accessed by concrete steps with decorative metal railings and a sandstone threshold. Fenestration also includes windows in a variety of styles and paint configurations. First floor features six over six wooden single-hung windows flanking a wooden picture window set within a substantial wooden sill and lintel. The second floor features three six-over-one wooden windows with wooden sills and lintels. The third floor features an arched dormer with an arched six-over-six double-hung window and dormer cheeks clad in asphalt shingles. Side and rear elevations feature one-over-one windows and glass block windows in a variety of sizes and shapes. Structure is topped with asphalt shingles on the gable roof and rubber roofing on the rear addition. The rear of the property features a brick patio and stone pavers running through an unlandscaped yard. 106 Walnut Street is a semi-detached brick structure featuring elements of the federal architectural style. Character-defining features include the varied facade treatments, including brick on the front and side elevations and stucco cladding, the rear addition, the decorative metal grates over the basement windows, the bay and Oriole windows on the side elevation, the large second-floor porch on the rear accessed by a wooden firescape, the wide dormer with a simple cornice on the front, and the standing seam metal roof. The main entryway features a wooden half-view door with a divided light pane set within a simple wooden frame and topped with a sunburst transom. It is accessed by concrete steps and threshold with metal railings. Fenestration also includes five evenly spaced wooden windows on the first and second floors of the front elevation and three one-over-one wooden windows arranged side by side in the dormer. Side and rear elevations feature windows of varying materials and varying paint configurations. The gable roof appears clad in standing seam metal, while the rear additions appear to be topped with flat rubber roofs. The side of the property features a concrete walkway, and the rear yard is covered in gravel. While the structures themselves are relatively simple representations of their architectural style, and they have undergone modern changes and renovations as evidenced in the rear additions, they do possess much of the original integrity and retain the aesthetic appearance of the block. Thus, they contribute to the historic and architectural character of the streetscape and district. The Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions: Any proposed exterior work will be discussed with the city's historic preservation specialists, who will determine whether such work can be administratively approved or whether approval from Harb will be required, and the applicant will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to confirm the appropriate size and location of refuse collection on-site and update the building accounts to reflect the new use. Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following reasons: Proposed project will adaptively reuse vacant office buildings, bringing historically and architecturally significant properties into productive reuse and re-establishing residential uses on-site. Additionally, the applicant is proposing larger units in multi-bedroom configurations. larger units in multi-bedroom configurations that are less common in many recent office-to-apartment conversions. Proposed reuse will add new residents to the neighborhood to activate the street on nights and weekends and grow a customer base to support local businesses and will provide additional units to the downtown housing inventory. Finally, other conversions of former office buildings in the surrounding neighborhood have demonstrated that the proposed use will not adversely impact the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Could you state your names and address and relationship to the project?
Sure, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brad Jones. I'm the President and CEO of Harris Town Enterprises. I'm at 320 Market Street in Harrisburg.
Hi, I'm Hannah McPhelan. I'm the General Counsel and Vice President of Real Estate for Harris Town.
Okay. You both heard the staff report and the conditions. Are you acceptable of those?
We are.
Okay. My sort of concern again, I guess it's the parking again. I know Jeffrey, you made a note in there, but as far as parking for the families, what do you propose?
Well, the nice part about these properties is that they are just about half a block from the Front Street corridor there and an easy walk from City Island. And so, you know, we think our, we've, you know, got about 240 apartments, 48 apartments now, and, you know, we find that many residents are willing to park, you know, some distance from their apartment, but that would certainly be an easy and affordable parking opportunity, a quick walk across the bridge, and there you are. So that's certainly one possibility. The other possibility is we've got a, you know, a nice discount with the parking system has a $100 residential parking fee for residents of the city, and that is another, you know, affordable garage opportunity.
Okay, thanks. Did you want to add anything to the report?
I'll just say, you know, we're excited to take on another, you know, historic preservation. We've been, you know, want to thank Jeffrey for his always impressive detailing of these projects. Sometimes I feel like he knows more about the building than we do. But I always thank him for his thoroughness there. And this is, you know, we did a couple of projects recently to preserve, you know, early 1900s buildings. The Fox on Washington at Second and Washington back in 2019, 2020. The Menneker at 17 South Second. And the Plum at 213 Locust. All three of those, we have historic preservation awards for, and we're excited that we can take on another project that is in that corridor there with, you know, the library's just made a fantastic investment, and we want to be part of that Walnut Street corridor redevelopment. These buildings are in very bad shape. They are blighted and have been unoccupied for some time and looking forward to restoring them.
Yes, I agree with you. I know you guys do a great job in all your projects, and, you know, that's a great accomplishment. But I don't have any specific question at this time, and I'll go to the Commissioners with any questions or comments or concerns. Commissioner O'Toole?
Not, not really. I mean, if I voted yes for the first one, I gotta vote yes for the second one. It's pretty much the same case, and I guess it's starting to look like office buildings in downtown Harrisburg are just not a real good investment right now. So, yeah, I'm in favor.
Okay. Commissioner Merrick?
Thanks. I would agree. We're just, you know, seeing a need for more residential housing in general in the city still, and the conversions of these types of properties seem to make sense to do that, to meet that need. I will say that I'm, it's really nice to see two and then a three-bedroom offering, so you're diversifying some of the housing stock that's being afforded, you know, for this area. A lot of times we only see the one bedroom, so it is nice to see a little bit more diverse housing being offered. I was trying to remember, maybe this is a question for Jeff. I don't know if he would know, Brad. Wasn't there a similar conversion also on Walnut Street of some properties? Is it next door?
Is it 108 and 120?
Okay, is it the same gentleman?
It is.
Okay, because I looked at the name and I said, wait a minute. I thought we already saw this gentleman's application and conversion.
Yeah, I think that project is underway, and he's actually in construction, but hadn't started on this one when you put it up.
That was going to be my follow-up question, was to ask how is that conversion going? I was assuming it was already completed, so. But you said it's under construction. Yeah, I was just curious how the success has been there. Okay. Yeah, my memory is still intact. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jordan?
So the addition on the back of the property, is that for both of them or just for one of the addresses?
There's no addition as part of our work. There was an addition that was previously done. Sorry, I'm Catherine Sterner.
You have to speak into the microphone.
So the, there was...
State your name.
This is Catherine Sterner. I'm with Murray Associates. We're the architects for the job. There is no addition proposed as part of this work. There was an addition previously done to both, actually to both buildings. So the one, 106, has the stucco clad addition.
So like that portion I seen back here, it's for both of them?
Right, what you're pointing at there is the stucco clad addition on 106, and then on the other side is siding. There was an addition with vinyl siding on 104. But that was done prior to us being involved in the project.
Okay, yeah, because my, I guess essentially my question was, because I wasn't certain if it was for both properties or whatnot, if there was like fire egress from the second floor or not.
So the, you can see the fire escape on 106 is the second floor egress from that unit. The second floor of 104, they would go out of the front stair, the enclosed stair in the front.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Commissioner, you have to say your name again.
That's fine, you'll get it. Yeah, Canamuchio. Thank you. So it sounds like it's preservation and the things on the back are not part of this project? Or is there any proposed exterior work?
So on the front of the buildings, you know, we just expect to, you know, sort of enhance and preserve what we can and try to work with the city on, you know, any, anything that, you know, historical preservation experts here at the city would recommend with regard materials.
I think there's some, like, loose bricks and things like that? They need to be fixed, those kind of things?
Roofs, you know, gonna need some work. We may need to replace a roof.
We really like the character, so our goal is to keep the character.
We want to, you know, I mean, these are, as Jeffrey pointed out so eloquently, these are, these are really special buildings and really enhance the character of that street. As you're seeing, there's a lot of these buildings that are going to be, you know, a lot of people are abandoning their offices. And so, but there's a huge demand for residential.
Just another little tidbit. So there's some 1980s vintage glass block on the west side of the building of 104 and a little bit on the north side of 104, and we're planning to remove that and put in some more traditional windows and a door. But that, you know, would have to go through the historic review.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to the public for any comments or questions. Is there anyone in the center for or against this project? If not, Commissioners, could I get a motion?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval of this project with the conditions. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks for all your good work.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, item number three. This is a variance and special exception application for 1501 Cameron Terrace. This is Zone RM. It's filed by, are they here?
I don't see them here. No, I think these are for 2310 Green Street. So I don't see the applicants for 1501 Cameron Terrace here. I mean, I would recommend tabling. Yeah, I would recommend a continuance of the case, and maybe they show up by the end of the meeting as well.
Okay. We'll come back to that one then. Item number four. This is a special exception for application for 2310 Green Street, which is Zone RM. It's filed by Diane Elliott, I mean Danny Elliott, and is to establish a personal service use and request relief from the off-street parking associated with the use.
So the applicant is requesting a special exception to establish a personal services use per Section 7-305.7 of the zoning code. ZHB approval of a special exception application is required for a personal services to be established in the RM District. The applicant is also requesting relief from the required off-street parking spaces per Section 7-327.6 of the zoning code. A personal services use is required to provide one space per 200 feet of gross floor area and one space for each employee. The property at 2310 Green Street is a .06 acre lot featuring a two-and-one-half-story, 1,729 square foot structure, which was constructed circa 1900. Property is bounded by the property at 2314 Green Street to the north, Green Street to the east. Property is at 22, 226 to 232 Emerald Street to the south and a narrow grocer's alley to the west. This detached structure features elements of the Greek Revival and Craftsman architectural styles. Character-defining features include the painted stucco facade, the full-width porch with prominent access stairs, the hipped roof, the prominent chimney, and the one-story garage in the rear of the lot shared with the adjacent property. Main entryway features a panelled fiberglass door with an oval pane set in a simple frame and fronted with a full-view storm door. It is accessed by a deep porch and concrete steps. The detached garage is accessed by a steel door with a divided light half-view pane. Fenestration also includes windows in a variety of sizes and configurations, although all are one-over-one windows. There's a dormer in the front room, front roof, in which a window has been replaced by ventilation louvers. Structure is topped with a hipped roof clad in asphalt shingles. As a detached residence in a neighborhood largely defined by detached and duplex homes, the building is similar in design and massing to nearby structures. Thus, the property contributes to the historic and architectural character of the community. The Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. Given that the curb cut and driveway on-site through which customers will access the proposed business is shared with the adjacent property, the applicant should provide an agreement with the, with that property owner acknowledging and authorizing such access. And that's largely because, you know, maybe the current owner is fine with that configuration, but if they sell the property in the future, you know, even if you have somebody walking down along their home, we don't want to create issues for the applicant's clientele. And then the applicant will not install any signage advertising or representing the business on the front of the property and primary structure, but may put a sign consistent with the applicable zoning regulations on the detached garage to guide customers to the business. Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. Proposed business and accessory use will be located in an accessory structure on-site, which has been converted from its original purpose of vehicular storage. Thus, the proposed use will not displace the primary residential nature of the property, being that the proposed personal services use will be limited to one chair and that there is not space to expand the business within the accessory structure, and because the business will be by appointment only, any impacts on the surrounding community will be minimal or negligible. This also prevents the non-conforming use from expanding in the future to the point that it would create adverse impacts. And finally, the applicant has submitted a petition of support with signatures from 18 residents of the surrounding community, demonstrating that the community is supportive and aware of the business and potential impacts.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your name, your address, and your relationship to the project?
Danny Elliott, 2310 Green Street. Owner. Provider.
Okay. You heard the staff report with the conditions. Are you acceptable of those conditions?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to add anything to the report?
As far as the parking, I know that it's during the time that people is at work in the morning, so that wouldn't be no concern because the hours would be, operation would be like 10 to 6, so about time they get off, you know, the business would be done, closed. So I don't see that be an issue far as parking. And I have a good relationship with the whole community because I do a lot of community things in the neighborhood, so I don't think they will have a problem far as, you know, my customers coming, and I have pretty respectful customers that come to my business.
I know you sort of took my concern out and answered it, but do you expect like a, like a period of time where you're going to get a lot of customers? Like, I don't want to see like double parking there. Do you think you have space enough to cover in case you get a busy client's coming?
As long as, because I'm only doing appointments only, so it's going to be like one in, one out. So far as the increase of customers, it's still going to be appointments only.
You're doing it by appointments?
Yes, only by appointments.
Okay. Okay. And the other thing that you usually ask about is if you're contracted to the community, and I see that you guys did an excellent job with the questionnaire, and I noticed the addresses. So you did two things that I usually ask about, so you cover that. Commissioners, with that, I have no other questions. If you have any questions or concerns, and I'll start with Commissioner O'Toole.
Yeah, no concerns. I accept Mr. Elliott's explanation about the parking, I accept Mr. Elliott's explanation about the parking, that he's doing it by appointment only, and his hours of business are when most of the neighbors are at work and not having a need for parking. And, yeah, I just echo your sentiment, Joe, about the surrounding neighbors. We really do appreciate seeing that. We didn't require the first two applicants, because their neighbors tend to be commercial, but when we go into neighborhoods like this, we like to see it. So, yeah, I'll be voting in favor of it.
Commissioner Merrick?
I don't have any questions or concerns. I'm in favor of the proposed project. Thanks.
Commissioner Jordan?
No questions. I'm in favor of it as well.
Joe?
That works. And just because it was mentioned, your one neighbor that shares the sort of access, they're okay with it?
Yes, yes, sir.
Great, I'm in support of it too. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public for or against this project? I'll go to the center. Young lady. That's true, you're for it.
If I may add, on the other side of the house is a walkway.
I haven't finished yet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Could you state your name and address, just to, for the records?
Kimberly Elliott.
Yeah.
Kimberly Elliott, twenty-three ten Green Street, Harrisburg, PA.
And you're for the project?
I am so for it.
Just want to get it on record. Okay, with that, I'll come back to the commissioners, and you had something you were stating?
On the other side is a walkway. So, we have, like, the driveway between the both houses, and then on the other side is just a plain walkway, where it leads back into the garage also.
Okay. Commissioners, if there's no other questions or concerns, could I get a motion?
Were there conditions?
Yeah, there were conditions.
Motion's approved with conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval of this project with the two conditions. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Good luck.
Oh, thank you so much. You have a good day.
Did you say you're gonna be a barber too?
Who? I'm a barber.
Yeah, or is it, is that?
Yes, I've been for over forty-something years.
Okay, because I might need one in a few. I think my barber's, health is getting bad. Good promotion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Since the other project isn't here, could I get a motion for continuance on the fifteen oh one Cameron Terrace?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue the fifteen oh one Cameron Terrace project. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Other business, Jeff?
Uh, nope.
Commissioners, anything good for the order? And you have anything? Should I get a motion for adjournment? Is there a second?
Second.
You staying adjourned?
All right.